All right, so let me just continue. And.
Let me see my screen.
Actually, if you don't, it might be easier because I can see people and that actually helps me know if someone has a question.
Okay.
Unless Beth, unless you need it, I have it on another screen on my computer right now.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I've got the printout for the minutes meeting.
Perfect.
So I'm good.
So unless anyone in the meeting room needs it, I think we're okay without it.
Okay.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Okay, so Ellen is going to be late to the meeting and Barbara has agreed to take the minutes. So the first thing we need is the roll call and just to help her out with this one. Oh, can you hear me okay? Okay. So just for the roll call, Ellen will be.
Gail's coming in, and Ellen.
Oh, she is?
Yep.
All right, let's find out if she's coming from her car or ready to take minutes. Oh, Cheryl's coming in, sorry, Miss Hard.
Oh, Gail and Ellen.
Okay. All right, so then actually for the minutes, Barbara, the only person we're missing is Brian, it looks like, am I right?
Yes.
Okay. And Ellen, quick question for you, are you in your car?
No, I'm actually, I'm actually home. I got home.
Oh, yay.
We did everything outside, they wanted to do their closing outside and we thought it was going to start pouring, so it was very motivating to get out of there quickly.
Oh, perfect. Okay, well, I want to thank Barbara for offering to take the minutes, but we're going to have Ellen.
Thank you.
Pick up, yep, thanks, thank you, both.
Okay.
So I called the meeting to order at 7:01. As far as the roll call, the only person we're missing is Brian, although I just saw a phone number pop up.
He's coming in.
Okay, yeah, we have Brian, we have everyone here. This is great.
Yay.
Thank you, guys. And Gail, thank you so much for setting this up so it could be both in-person and remote. The hybrid model is great and, you know, hopefully by September, things will settle back down, but this is wonderful, so thank you. All right, so we have the roll call set as far as we have no citizens.
Muriel's also here. Let me see.
Yep. You have that, Ellen, right?
No, I didn't hear what she said, sorry.
That Mary is also there.
Okay, so I have Ellen and Brian and Mary on Zoom.
Let's see, so actually in the meeting room, you have John, Carol, Ralph, Mary, Barbara, and Gail, and then hybrid, you have Brian, Cheryl, Ellen, Beth, and myself.
It's so weird.
And I can say that's lower.
Yeah, so it's Ellen, Brian, Cheryl, Beth, and Rebecca who are doing it on Zoom.
Yeah, and so basically as far as the roll call, you have everyone here, which is, I'm not sure that's happened in a long time, so it's great.
No, that's great news, yeah.
All right, so we have no citizen comments, so basically if I could get a motion to review and approve the minutes from our prior meeting from May 17, 2021, please.
I move, Cheryl moves.
Thank you, Cheryl. Could I get a second?
John.
Okay, thank you, John. You got that, Ellen?
Yep, Cheryl and John.
Awesome, thank you. And were any discussion about the minutes or?
Question.
Can you hear us okay?
Yes, you're good.
Just wanted to make sure because we have a microphone on the table here.
Yeah, it's a little echoey, but it's really, really wonderful and it's actually really kind of cool seeing everyone there, so thank you. So Gail, do we have any correspondence?
No, none.
Perfect. Make it nice and easy.
Oh, yep, backup.
We need to vote on the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, so yeah, we had a motion to review and approve the minutes. Could I? Wow, sorry, I'm struggling with words tonight. Could I have a vote, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed or abstained? Okay, so unanimously passes. Thank you, John. All right, so correspondence, we have none. So moving on to the treasurer's report, Carol.
If we actually balance this, but if you look at the sheet on the spreadsheet side, there is something that is supposed to be in those receipts that has been received by the town and that's the borrower, it's not a grant, it's the borrower reimbursement for when we trade books around with other libraries for the patients or when they borrow elsewhere. We received $1,639, but we didn't get it in our own hands at bank account. The town has it and has chosen not to put it in our account at this time, but because it was supposed to come in and it's an important part of our budget, I have on the spreadsheet side, I include it as an income item. So when you get to the bottom of that sheet, it's off by $1,639, but it's, that's the amount that should be off by there. In the report side, I did not actually enter it there, but it needs to show up in our books before I end the year and start the next year, so.
Do we have a sense of, oh, sorry.
I made a notation at the bottom to explain that.
No, that's helpful. Do you have a sense when we would get that money from the town?
I don't, it's in discussions. Ian is doing things a little bit differently and he doesn't want to transfer it to our account and then have to transfer money out to pay the bills. I had a discussion with the state today and for transparency, he really needs to do that, so we can show that the money came in and how we spent it. Leaving it in the town, well, I say in the town, it's in an account for the library, but there's no way for us to see how it gets spent doing it that way. So I'm going to meet with him again and talk to him about how we could make it look more transparent for the state.
Perfect, thank you.
Talk to Marcia.
I haven't.
Oh, I think she was on vacation.
He told me that the mayor was on his side about this and he's doing, boy, the guy's not happy about it either.
Oh.
And I, yeah, I did not. I'm going to try to, yeah, and you'll see it. But the deposit's going to our account. As an alternative, I could ask the state to give us our own direct deposit account that will go to our base.
Into you.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep us posted on that one, if, you know, obviously, and, you know, let us know what we can do.
Yes.
An eye on that one.
This is Beth, can I ask a question or later?
Please, absolutely.
Is there anything that the state in the paperwork or stipulations that says that it needs to be done? Like?
There's a thing statute that says the money has to be in a library account and cannot go into the general fund.
And I'm sure you've already provided that to Ian, who? Ian is someone who's covering from somebody else's position?
He's the treasurer and he's absorbed the job, he's in a double job, and I think he's a little bit overwhelmed. I think he's a little overwhelmed. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for explaining.
Yeah, thanks, Gail, keep us posted as you have, you know, the next conversation and that and.
Okay, I will.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Gail or Carol related to this?
Comment that I'm amazed at how well we're doing with the copiers, given the fact that we were closed so much and that people basically stayed away, but we wouldn't expect to get over 11 months, $456 out of a budget of $850. It's well more than half.
They're making up for it.
They're making up for it, so that's right.
Get all the stretches.
Well, if you look at the computer, it's definitely a fact.
Yeah.
That's weird, yeah.
That's true.
People are coming in.
That's great. Yeah, really good point as well. All right, so Carol, assuming you have nothing to add to that, well, you know, accept the report, subject to audit. And Gail, if we could get your report, please.
I liked the way you did that, you followed the meeting.
I'm trying.
Come on, come on, later. Okay. We are having a hybrid meeting, as you know, and I sent out a special fund budget to make sure that it's on the agenda to approve tonight. I did send out, I didn't wish it today, we have all taken rather large donations on Friday and wanted to get the donation of $500.
So you put that into the carryover funds?
Yes, yes, I have that, and that way it allows us to use it for the world donation, for they up those accounts as well. The estimates are based on what we took in this year and I adjusted accordingly up and down through expenditures on that. I was hoping to have it yet to preach today on the upper grid. We submitted our grant application for $17,836, I believe it is, and we struggled trying to get it to work in the best way possible. Because it's type of money and because it was for digital inclusion, there were certain things that were eligible and certain things that were not. We tried to look at what we have the most impact for our community here and I did put in there some hotspots that we can mull out. I increased the number of laptops down to one because we do have several laptops already that we could make work. We looked at a wonderful low-powered umbrella for the patio that we have had electric outlets and USB ports to charge devices, but we just couldn't make it work, it was just too expensive and we didn't want to spend all the money that way. I'm hoping we show it to the mayor and if he has any green money, it would be ideal out on the green because there's no power here as well. He goes to the table, so it would be nice, but what we're doing instead is I'm going to have it outside of the outlet, put all the buildings and a couple of three-seater outlet toilets alongside the patio that will say the same thing for us. Because we're an open building, it's very hard for anyone that needs a quiet place or whatever it is to study, like phone call, take tests. They make these phone booths rooms that you can put in the library. They also, they make them single, double, and four people. The double would have been nice, but we don't have the room to fit a double, but we feel we could fit a single phone booth within the room. And what we do is it would give people privacy to do a telehealth appointment, to do an online drug review, to take an exam, any of those things, and they all fit the criteria of the grid. We also want to expand the wifi capability to the outside of the library, they get stronger so it will be further around the perimeter. So we're going to be replacing the routers here and then, because we're using the money for internet, we have to filter. So filtering here can be done for free through CEN because we're on fiber. At Gilsteri, I have to pay for the filtering software and the routers for the capable patient to filter, so that's all in the grants. And the other thing we'll be getting is a self-checkout station for Bill and that will allow patients to do a contactless checkout. I believe you have one slot, a self-checkout?
We have three.
You have three. Everyone I've talked to has said that patients love it.
Yeah, ours has recently been upgraded, so it's been there the last week or so.
Okay.
So for us, it's been fun to be able to interact with the patients again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I have some staff who are fearful of trying to take away their job and that's not the reason.
I can guarantee that now, because there's always going to be an issue that either someone's card needs to be updated or, you know, there's an issue with fines or whatever that, you know, they'll still have to.
And I think some people will use it and some people won't.
Right.
You know, you go to the grocery store, you go to the hardware store, they often have self-checkouts now.
Yeah.
This is, I've never been able to do it because of the cost, because this is the way for me to get what within that section.
It should help with stopping as well.
Right, it will free staff to do other things.
That's when we first went over to self-checks, we made a lot of stops, so.
I mentioned the phone booth idea for here, we're also buying a three-sided privacy booth. It's not fully enclosed, but it will look better with Gilsteri, we put it upstairs in the cooler and it will just do a little bit of privacy and quiet. So I tried to spread it through both libraries, especially that place. And now I'm just living here. And the library news, the Bill Library Association voted to give a larger scholarship this year to a graduate senior instead of doing the two middle school awards with the high school award, they just did a bigger one for the high school. And the award this year was the Ellen Mimbeck. It was given, it's given each year to a student who is interested in pursuing a degree or has an interest in a career in creative writing, media technology, or library science. I've listed the holiday out for next year. To see what they are, it's for us to vote for, I think I mentioned it, the mayor designated the Friday, the Fourth of July, is a symbolic holiday that doesn't work for us because we're open Saturday. So we will be open here on Friday, we're closed, both libraries on Saturday, and then we are for the holiday, and then we'll be closed on Monday because the holiday is over Sunday and the town started to the Monday. And other than Thanksgiving, Eve, and Easter, I don't believe there are any other unusual dates in here, you know, holidays. I don't know what will happen next year with June key. That will be a holiday.
Holiday, I don't believe.
Yeah.
States have options whether to.
To take it or not, yeah, yeah, so we'll have to see what happens with that. And then because we'll be opening up our meeting room again this fall, I put in the library condition meetings for next year so we can get them in the book. Any questions? I hope you could hear me at home.
Yeah, absolutely, loud and clear.
Okay.
I have one question and then I'll double check if there are others as well. The filtering software or the, that you have to have, what is it filtering out? I mean, I know that's probably a silly question, but.
The idea is it's supposed to filter out any kind of pornography.
Okay.
That type of thing.
Okay, I figured it was something like that, but I just, it was, it surprised me with it being a federal grant that it had filtering versus just, I was just curious, thank you. Any other questions for Gail on her report?
Nope.
All right, that was a great report, Gail, thank you very much. And let's see, what's next, just scrolling around, okay.
This is Beth, were we going to?
Oh, yeah.
Were we going to talk about whether or not we're extending? Doing hybrid? There was a, there was a note here, or is that going to be under the new business?
Yeah, I forgot that, sorry. Well, we can talk about it now, I mean, so our next meeting probably will be in September, right?
Unless something comes out, we usually cancel July and August. Is that? Is everyone okay with that?
Yes. Yeah.
Do you need a motion for that?
I don't think any emotion because if something came up and I had a meeting, the option would be ahead.
Yeah, canceling at this point.
Yeah, right.
Canceling before I was before.
Yeah, yes. So the way we usually leave it is we'll cancel it tentatively and if enough of the cancel it, you'll get the mail.
Okay.
And Gail, would you be comfortable just sort of leaving the option out for hybrid in September? You know, we may feel differently then, we, you know, who knows what will happen when, you know, fall starts rolling around, but it's just keeping the option, you know, and hopefully we won't necessarily need it.
I'm happy to leave it out there for a couple of reasons. Maybe somebody will be out of town, but they want to attend and it would give them the option to attend remotely. So I'm not opposed, the only issue is I may have trouble doing the Gail ferry, so it might have to be here.
Okay, and I'm just looking, with this September meeting is where? I'm scrolling, I'll find it in a second.
Do a Gail ferry.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I can test over there, see if we'll work, or we could have it here.
How do people feel? I know some people don't prefer driving to Gail, you know, to Bill as much. Okay, I mean, you're, okay, yeah, yeah, let's, if you don't mind keeping it as an option, if we have to change the location, as long as that's, you know, not hugely problematic to anyone, let's, let's kind of keep the option out there.
Okay.
Does that work for everyone?
Okay, you know, maybe if I change the location.
Thanks, Rebecca.
That's why I tell it because I'm quick, how soon?
Well, you're not changing the date or anything and what does you do for tonight?
Well, if tonight is here and the agenda is here.
I guess you could just, you don't have to do anything if you're not changing the place or the time.
Okay, okay.
I don't think you need to say if we're doing hybrid or not.
No, but if you change, the list she had said there will be a Gail ferry, but if we're going to have it here, I probably have to let it down.
Right, right, it has to be there for public.
Right, and the agenda is posted to here, so, yeah.
Well, are you going to just check, excuse me, Beth, are you going to check and see if it does work, Gail's ferry before?
I will test over there and see what happens. Yeah.
If it turns out that it's problematic, let us know and we can, you know, figure something out.
They don't have the same projector setup that we have here, they have, they have the old projector and I'll have to try it out and see.
Okay, and worst case scenario, we're just really good about, you know, saying who we are before we speak, you know, or something like that, if we can't see the room. I mean, obviously, you're figuring out who we are too, so, you know. All right, we'll make, we'll make something work and, you know, Gail, again, if it turns out that it's really problematic, definitely let me know and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports, John, do you have anything for Friends or from Friends?
Well, the only thing I have for the Friends is that they just have their buy one, get one free sale, I have no information on what they raised, but I know by going down there every Thursday and filling in slots, that a fair number of books disappeared from Gilsteri, at least, I don't, I don't know about from here, but do you, Gail, do you have any numbers?
I don't have any numbers, I have all the sheets in my closet.
Okay.
She asked me to come in this Friday and put them up, so we'll get a report.
But, you know, Sarah Sormio was also went to the president of the Friends, began to find a president, but she finally relented and offered to.
Step up.
She stepped up and took the position.
Oh, that's awesome. And do you know, are they accepting donations at either library yet or is that still on hold?
Unfortunately, not. We are, at Gilsteri, at Gilsteri. We have tons of books there that in the tables that we meet are used for meetings are completely full of DVDs and nonfiction books.
And those have to get cleaned up.
I know, they have to get cleaned up, so how are we going to solve that problem with people?
Well, I'm glad at least they, you know, have a president and the sale went well.
DVDs, it's resolved, so that's my report.
Okay, thank you. It looks like as far as old business, we have nothing there, am I correct in that?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, so as far as new business, could I please get a motion to approve the FY22 special fund budget, the updated version that Gail sent out today? I assume, does everyone have a copy of it? Or has seen it?
Carol moved.
Okay, Carol moved, could I get a second?
I'll second, Cheryl.
Oh, thank you, Cheryl. All right, so any?
I don't know if it was Cheryl or no.
It doesn't matter. So I typed Gans and Winston, so you're stuck with it.
Perfect, Ellen, way to make a decision.
Yep, that's what came off my fingers. I'll be honest, I just saw the email at 10 to 7, I have not parsed it out at all.
Do you want, Gail can share her screen on, well, I'm assuming she can, if you want to take a look at it while we're meeting.
I mean, I can do that right on my screen too, I can just go into the computer and take a look at it, I mean, it's, it's great that we're getting more donations, so.
It's basically based on the receipts that we've taken in this year.
Okay. So what has changed? What am I looking at that has, is in flux, the $2,000 donation?
Well, the big change is the upper grant is on there.
Oh, okay, of course, yeah.
And then based on the money we took in this year, I put together a budget for next year, pretty similar to last year. In, in the expenditure accounts, the large print books, the audio books, I increased the online computer account a little bit.
This is Beth, I would just suggest where it says expenditures, it says FY2020, should that be 2022? This is Beth. I would just suggest where it says, um, expenditures, it says FY2020. Should that be, um, 2022?
Yes, yes.
Oh, wow, good catch.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's my contribution. That's it. I'm done.
Well, it's a really good one, so thank you.
What was the correction?
Correction. Is it FY22 or is it 21? Isn't it 20 fiscal year 21?
No, it's 2022.
Oh, wow.
We're in 2021 now.
So what am I changing in the minutes?
2:30 is 2022.
Right.
Is she going to need a transcript?
Ellen, to answer your question, um, the, the change is under expenditures, changing it, um, correcting it to be FY2022.
Well, I see.
Yeah.
Then on receipts, should you change it to 22 as well, because it says 21?
No, because those are the receipts that came in this year.
Okay.
So the 2021 is next.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everyone, or were there any other questions on that? Okay, um, could I have a vote to, um, approve the amended, updated FY22 special fund budget, please? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone? Anyone opposing or, or abstaining? Okay, it passes unanimously. Okay, and then easy one, could I get a motion to approve the holiday closings for FY22?
Still moved.
Ellen moved, and could I get a second, please?
John. Cheryl seconded.
Excellent, um, I think Cheryl seconded. I mean, I know she did. I wasn't sure if there was someone else too.
Okay.
Any, yeah, Zoom picked up Cheryl first, so, you know. Um, so is there any discussion about the holiday closings? All right, so all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstain? Okay, motion passes unanimously. And then could I get a motion to approve the meeting schedule for, um, 2022? The commission meeting? All right, Carol moved. Could I get a second?
Well.
Is that Ralph?
Yes.
All right, and Ralph seconded. Um, any, um, discussion about the meeting schedule other than, you know, we've already had? Okay, um, could I get a vote? Uh, let's see, any, everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or, um, abstained? Okay, passes unanimously. Um, we, and Gail, there wasn't any new business, any additional new business, was there?
No, um, I didn't know if you want to mention the, uh, the program on how to run a meeting.
Oh, yeah, um, yeah, so Gail, um, arranged for someone whose name I cannot remember.
Mark.
Remind me his name?
Mark DeRosa.
Yeah, Mark DeRosa came in and did a Robert's Rules, um, training that was to, basically, I think, was it any of the town commissions or anyone that was interested? It was probably about maybe 20 people on the call, is that right?
Yes, yeah, it was all town committee chairs.
Okay.
I thought, did I hear that only 18 people listened? I thought there were a lot more.
There were 19. I'm trying to get Regina to put the recording on the town webpage.
Okay.
And she has to get the mayor's approval.
Oh.
Because what seems like she'd go on the page.
Sure. I just saw a lot of more people but tuning in.
Yeah, he did a really, really nice job. He had a wonderful presentation style and the, the words just rolled right off his tongue. And I was saying to Gail earlier today, I do not have that skill, so, you know. But I at least know what I'm supposed to be doing if, even if the words don't come out. But, um, but people had really good questions and I think they were really grateful that he came. And I think, Mary, you were the one who had initially, um, proposed the idea, or at least asked, you know, if someone, or if Gail knew of someone.
Me, and I vote you.
And he was there, he did go, yeah, yeah.
But it, but it was really good and, um, you know, I, I, I think we, you know, everyone attending learned a lot and, so I think, I think it was good. And, you know, as, as Gail said, it's going to be posted on the town website. So if you're curious, feel free to check it out. And, and I'm also grateful to have John, who keeps me in line when I accidentally go off the rules. Um, any questions on that, or are we? I think we talked about the, um, July meeting that we.
Wait, uh, Rebecca, Carol.
Yeah.
Carol headed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does that mean it will be a, a public part of the, the town website? So that people from any organization, I mean, I think this was for town departments, but if anybody from a club or a church or some other organizations, it could be quite useful for other.
Once we figure out where it's going to go, I had a couple of suggestions, um, under town resources and on the meeting page. And then I'm also going to put it on the library page. So we will send out a couple of those posts.
That sounds good.
That they can watch it.
Yeah, no, it was, it was, it was great. And, I mean, he definitely started it very simple, of sort of the, which, which I was grateful for. It was sort of the, the reason why these rules exist, which made everything else make sense. So that was, you know, it was just basically to make sure that everyone has a voice, which, you know, and, so it was, it was, and he just had a very nice style and, and good slides and such, so.
Right.
Um, yeah. Um, so we probably will cancel the July meeting unless we, there's something we need to meet about. Potentially also the, um, the August one. So with, with that in mind, um, could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:38?
Still moved.
All right, so Beth moved, and could I get a second, please?
It's Ellen, I can second.
Oh, okay, Ellen seconded. So, um, the meeting is, well, I, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I suppose no one's opposed. Um, all right, so with that, the meeting is adjourned at 7:39, I guess. Um, and I wish everyone a really wonderful summer and, you know, stay safe and, you know, somehow avoid humidity if at all possible. Or maybe I'm projecting my issues with heat, you know.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Good to see everybody, you know, hopefully, yeah, good seeing you as well. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. It was really nice to have everyone here.
Nice to see you all.
See you in September. Be well.
Bye, stay well.
Take care. Thanks again, Gail.
Rebecca, I think that. That was out. We'll see you later.
It did. Thank, thank you so, so much. I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Bye.